January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-two of the Public Health Safety Judiciary and Ethics Committee minutes.
All right, so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So be. Reports and recommendations. Number one, resolution seeking to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wood Dale and the Village of Addison for certain public, pardon me, police services. We have our guest speaker this evening, Chief Greg Avesta. Take it away, chief.
All right, Mr. Chairman. So before you tonight, you actually only need to approve Appendix D to the intergovernmental agreement. In two thousand and fifteen, we signed an agreement with ACDC to provide dispatch services. That was based upon the state law mandating consolidation, and that's when we closed our radio room. We last renewed in two thousand and nineteen with them, and that was a three-year agreement for the payment, and now we're looking for another three-year agreement for payment for them. All of their agencies are getting the exact same increase, which is five and a half percent over the next three years. And just for comparison, when this went into effect, we were paying substantially more for those services, and this is still a substantial savings over what we were paying at the time back in two thousand and fifteen.
Do we have some questions at the council? Alderman Messina.
Is that five and a half percent, is that compounding year over year?
Go ahead, chief.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, five and five and a half on top of that new number, and then five and a half on top of that new number.
Chief?
That's correct, and that's based upon their salary increases over that period of time, and it also includes all the equipment upgrades, whether it be the microwave system where they view our feeds or control our doors or whatever the case may be.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Woods.
Thank you, Alderman Sorrentino.
You're welcome.
It's where we're all being gentlemanly this evening. So I shared Alderman Messina's same concerns, and when I looked at that number and did the five and a half, five and a half, five and a half, but then I did the math of what it used to be, how many personnel we had in our old dispatch center, did some division, and as you just stated, it is still less than what we were paying back then having our own dispatchers, so.
Okay.
Much as it might be a little painful, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, let's, a couple more questions here. Let's go to the Alderman, now we're gonna call him a mayor this evening. Mayor Police?
Thank you. Chief, so, when they do upgrades and stuff, we're notified, is that how it works, or they just do it? And we get costs, and so we know what all those numbers are?
Yeah, so they notify us, though they often work with IT for things that are information, you know, IT-related, or the microwave system. They'll bring in outside contractors too if they need to change the relays or anything, but they work with us closely on that.
Follow up?
Follow up?
Yeah. Just out of curiosity, how often, how much do they spend per year on like upgrades and things like that? If you ever, I'm sure they give you that stuff, so, just kind of like an informational one, the manager's report or something.
Go ahead, chief.
Yeah, I'll see if I can get that number. I know some of the, some of the systems are quite costly, and I can, they did provide us an oral update as to what some of those systems that they'll be upgrading over the next few years are. The biggest thing to remember with the consolidated dispatch center compared to Ducomm is Ducomm member agencies, they own the building, they own everything. We specifically, we don't want to own another building and another, so that five and a half percent includes building costs and everything else.
Correct.
But I'll get you a number, and we'll get into the manager's report as to upgrades that they've done.
In case people ask, you know, to hear this stuff, and...
Yeah, sure.
Alderman Jacob?
And then, the fee, is that based on population or number of calls per year? How is that based?
Chief?
So they, when they initially brought us on as a member agency, they did an analysis based on number of calls, you know, number of phone calls that are coming in, because during the off-hours, they handle all of our non-emergency phone calls too. At other times, some go into records, and then, based on that, they've just made an adjustment from that. There's not a complicated EAV formula, or, you know, tax-based formula or population formula like Ducomm does for it. Again, we're buying a service as opposed to having complete say into, well, this is the formula you should use that Ducomm does. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Chief, a follow-up?
So do they reevaluate that? Because I mean, that was a while ago that they looked at how many calls we have. Do they reevaluate that every year with all the department that they service?
Go ahead, chief.
More of what they do is they reevaluate the total call load and radio traffic call. So there's been some reconfigurations of radio channels over the years, but there hasn't been such a change in balance of calls that really I think there would be any type of big adjustments, so. What we don't want to get into is the argument that's going on at Ducomm as to, well, our tax base is higher because of this reason, but we have less calls for service. And we're really, we're paying a contractual service to them as opposed to being able to demand, well, you know, we have two calls less per capita than I task it is, so we should be a little bit cheaper than them. Looking at what everyone's paying into the things, we're at a reasonable rate, and I think it's pretty fair.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Messina, do you end up?
Yeah, I think you may have answered it, and I thought I saw it in your report. We also had more calls for service during two thousand and nineteen to now. Is that correct? Does there increase, like, are they taking more calls, I guess, is my point?
No, as far as calls for service, our calls have actually gone down a little bit.
They have.
Total calls for service, obviously, two thousand and twenty and the beginning of twenty-one was a little bit unique, but now we're back to a consistent level and going up a little bit again, so.
I'll have to look in that manual. I thought, maybe I misconstrued something in your report.
In the annual report?
In the annual report, so, okay.
No, we're actually a little bit less than two thousand and nineteen right now.
Okay, thank you.
Before we take the vote, I'd just like to let everybody know how grateful we should be that we're voting on a increased salary here versus being part of a vote that would be to rearm what was once a missile silo at that same property. And take time to say a little prayer, and God bless, and protect the citizens of the Ukraine during this crazy time. That being said, we'll take a roll call now on the motion and the second.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Item two is a resolution seeking to approve a intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wood Dale and the Wood Dale Park District for certain police services. Chief?
Thank you, sir. So this is another agreement that we come back to after a three-year expiration. I've worked with the Park District Director to come up with this agreement. It's been a longstanding agreement, probably at least twenty years, that we've provided a number of services for them. One of those are bank runs for their weekly deposits that go to the bank. What we did is tried to calculate the time that it takes an officer to leave the station, go to the pickup locations, get to the bank and return it. They do have a preference for sworn officers to handle that transaction, you know, armed sworn officers as opposed to the CSOs. So in there, what we did is we made an adjustment based on the top pay for our union members, the sworn contract of two and a half percent. That's what we did the last time too, was we matched it to the top pay of that. And then, on the other side, in the past, we did have pool crossing guards that we essentially split the cost for that. With the reconfiguration of the intersection, you know, when it was very close to Irving Park Road, cars were always blocking that location, and also back in those times, a lot more people actually walked to the pool. With the installation of the pool, the signal that pedestrians can do to cross, and the location being way farther north, it gets very limited use. We did a survey over a week this year, and we got about seven people a day that, during those six hours, that actually crossed at the location, and most of them were not going to the pool, and it wasn't children that were unaccompanied going to the pool. It was some of our regular pedestrians in town that were just crossing at that location while we happened to have crossing guards. So both us and the Park District thought it would be appropriate this time to not staff that service.
Alderman Jacob, you have a question?
On the study you did, wasn't pool attendance down greatly last year because of COVID?
Chief?
So the year before was obviously way down, but this was a trend before COVID that even after we signed the last agreement, two thousand and nineteen, there was very, very limited use after the reconstruction of the intersection, and that already had us at that time saying, we need to reconsider this the next time around.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll make the motion.
Second.
And one more comment, if I may, before we take this vote. May Sue Turco rest in peace, one of the best crossing guards we've had. Take the vote, I lean.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, police department space needs analysis will be addressed on June ninth. The license plate reader camera will also be addressed on June ninth. And with nothing else to be addressed, I'll need a motion for an adjournment.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much for your attention this evening.
Like, call the Public Works Committee meeting to order, the minute taker note that all people are still in attendance. First up, I'd like to approve the minutes dated February tenth, two thou, excuse me, February tenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Next up, report and recommendation, an agreement between the City of Wood Dale and H.R. Green for professional services for Second Avenue at Spruce Road feasibility study. Pass that off to Director Lang.
Thank you, Chairman. During our CIP meeting, it was elected by the council to move this item from the unfunded list to discuss it at a future meeting for potential funding, as there's a general lack of consensus among the council and several unknowns related to the feasibility of this project. Staff feels the best step forward would be to conduct a feasibility study to look into some of those unknowns and help aid in decision-making. The study would look at geometric concept layouts for the proposed improvements, as well as necessary right-of-way easements, drainage and utility conflicts, as well as an estimate of probable cost, and some agency coordination issues, including with the Wood Dale Police Department and Fire Districts about emergency response times. The idea is that the items gathered here would help aid whether to move forward with the project later this year. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, so why can't we answer at least the majority of these questions in-house? They seem fairly answerable if we do a little research. We're outstanding fifteen grand.
I think before we approach, the design of this project is going to be the easiest part. The time-consuming aspects are going to be the items related to the necessary right-of-way, the easements with the private residents over there, and the agency coordination with the township, potentially IDOT, depending on where we close this off at, the Fire District, and our own Police District. But I think the first step that we need to do is to have a geometric layout of what we're looking for, an estimate of probable cost to make sure it's even feasible for us to move forward with. There are some potential utility conflicts over there that we're aware of. So once we have those items, then we would want to approach those other agencies and see if it's worth the city's funding.
And to be fair, let's take a step back. When we talk about feasibility, I'm guessing it's financial, because I know this got brought up with an overwhelming majority of the residents, every single one actually, including on the block that this is blocked off, with a preliminary drawing that had that hammerhead, unless I was told incorrectly, staff had already talked to some of the emergency responders, and that was their only feedback, is if your people are okay with that thirty-second delay, we're okay with it. Did anything change from that conversation? Because everybody I talked to, the Fire District, Township, they said they were a hundred percent okay with it. So what element of this? To me, this seems like a feasibility study to say, is it going to cost too much to buy the right-of-way? Everything else, as far as your research and everybody I called, there's no other topic other than, is this going to cost too much money? Did I misconstrue something?
I was not involved with any conversations with the Fire District directly, although we did have a consultant look into this. I think it was a ballpark estimate of what this might cost. I don't think anything's changed from what...
But did he have a conversation with the emergency responders? That's, that was my question. I know, I know this whole point here is to say, is it too much where we kill it? I'm talking about the emergency responders. Did that conversation happen or not? Because I was told it was, and everything I relayed back to my residents, along with Alderman Jacob, said that we did, and they were all okay with it, as long as you're okay with the delay. So did nobody not have that conversation? Because everything I show, and I'll dig in my notes and find it, says that you guys did. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was involved in this project at the beginning, and I know there was two different types of potential configurations. One's called a hammerhead, I forgot what the other one, I don't know if it was a cul-de-sac or something else. I remember that the township was talked to. I believe the Fire District was talked to as well, but I would have to go back and look at the email chain to see the specifics of that. I do not know.
I mean, I do. I had it, signed, I know I did.
I'll take your word for it.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. We, neither here nor there for this conversation as a feasibility study, but Alderman Woods?
Yeah, going into, and I don't have a horse in the race, I'm just asking questions. So the majority of this property is unincorporated, correct? And then on top of that, majority of it's unincorporated Bensonville. And whether we go with the hammerhead and/or cul-de-sac, I just did some brief overlays based on international fire code and what the turning radius of the trucks and stuff were. We're gonna have to buy easements on at least four pieces of property.
Two.
I don't think you can get away with two. But, I'm not going to debate that.
Yeah, yeah, no, either or, right.
What I put together, I'm looking at four. I took two different locations, and to make it work, it would be, it would touch four pieces of property. Albeit the fourth one would be a small piece, the three other, three other properties would be a bigger piece. So part of my question is, can't we just make some calculations, determine, why do we have to spend fifteen thousand to find out this project is a million-dollar project? And do we want to move forward? Which I think is what Alderman Messina is saying anyway, that that's, that's going to be the big thing. I don't think that the Fire Department's gonna turn it down for thirty seconds.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I mean, I think it should be a financial feasibility study, based on the info that I got, all the signatures I got, everybody in that subdivision, based on all the conversations I've had, this is a financial feasibility study. Because as far as I know, or that I was told, either I found it out directly, or I found it out from you guys, along with Alderman Jacob, I'll give him credit, it's all, everybody else is in agreement. It really was just down to the numbers. What is it, to your point, Alderman Woods, that's the big curveball, right? Is the acquisition of those properties, which I thought was two, could be four, whatever it might be, to figure out, is this a two fifty? Is it a three? I've never heard the million, but is it a half million?
I don't, I don't know either.
Right, we don't know what it is, but I think, is it, that's what, I mean, it's irregardless for this conversation, but the financial feasibility probably is to figure out some of the construction costs, I'm guessing, and then potentially what those pieces of property that we might have to. I forgot the number of feet that I was told you guys would have to grab from those two, and properties that are unincorporated Bensonville, but...
And, if I may?
And our police unit.
And as part of this, you want to close off second, right? Is that part of the...
That's the whole intention, right?
Right, so, there's issue, so there's multiple issues, easement issues, legal issues upon the, along with the purchase of the pieces of property and then incorporating them into the city, that's if the property owners are willing to do that, so, I don't know. I, maybe it's the right way to do it, I look at it, it's like we could figure out the majority of this number ahead of time for quicker and for less than fifteen thousand.
Can I, I mean, I know I've brought to you multiple cities that have done this. Elmhurst, I've been in a lot of contact with, and the number you guys are saying is much higher than the number they've given me. I'm not trying to landbase you, but I just feel like it started very small, and now it's exploded, but, I mean, I can give you a very quick example, five minutes from here. Elmhurst, Willowbrook, Hinsdale, all has the exact same scenario, all for the same reason that we're proposing, because of cut-through traffic and issues.
What number are you thinking it is?
I don't, well, I don't know, I'm just saying.
Because I was under the impression it's like two hundred thousand and change.
That's what I, I was just saying.
So I'm not quite sure where you're getting a number from.
It's gone from two fifty to five to million, so...
I believe in the CIP, it was two fifty.
Right.
Three hundred. To touch quickly on the easements, it's been my experience through some of these other projects, the stormwater projects we just completed last year, that these easements are some of the biggest time drain on staff. Each resident has their own wants and desires, and depending on the concept layout and how it impacts their property, those can change throughout the project. So that's, that's one reason why we'd like to have a consultant onboard to assist staff with that. Financially, you're right, it's not only, it's certain drainage impacts, utility impacts that could, like, as I mentioned, there's a storm sewer that runs through there that might have to be rerouted, that property on the northwest, northeast corner, I'm sorry, is used as kind of a retention area, a detention area for stormwater. So having these items identified will aid us in our decision-making down the road, and can be used, and quite frankly, they would be done during a Phase One engineering agreement. They're preliminary surveying methods that would be used in the ultimate design. So having these out of the way will make that process much smoother, as I mentioned. That's, that's the easy part of this. It's the time, talking to all these agencies, and whatever conversations took place before between the Fire Department, the Police Department, the city, our consultants, you know, a simple conversation is different than saying, okay, this house has a fire, how long would it take us to respond given these situations? So that's more along the lines of what we're going to be looking at.
Mayor?
Okay, so, Alan, when they do this, now, I know that, where you're talking about stormwater, that northern spot on Second, I could tell you that guy has a septic field under that piece of property. So depending how much land they gotta take, they might have to take that, but if they do this study, like on Montrose, right, at Dead Ends, from the eighty-three side and from the central side, but, I don't know how true this is, but I was told that median they put in there, the actual, it was made so the fire truck can go over it. A simple median of that type wouldn't even cost us fifty thousand if we just closed it off. Is that something that can be done over there? Is that, are we gonna, are we gonna find this out?
Director Lang?
Right, the geometric concept is what they're going to be looking at as part of this. I think the most common, the most sensible idea is a hammerhead design that would still allow for garbage trucks and fire trucks to go down and turn around.
The hammerhead design, that's, I see it on Farina Court, that's...
You'll see it in eighty-three and Elmhurst, passing north.
Not a big fan of those, but I understand the garbage trucks and whatnot, so, I'm just curious if we're looking at all options, or just the hammerhead and the, and the thing, if, you know, if we're talking about getting the fire truck through.
I believe part of what they discussed before was just having it like a barrier curb, an emergency vehicle could jump that if need be. I don't know if that's ideal for their, their equipment, but...
Again, those are questions for the Fire Department, not for me or anybody on this council.
Right.
I'm just looking at other things, and I know there's a septic field, I don't know how big it is, but I know it's there, because the gentleman was talking about annexing in. And he goes, oh, then I could get rid of my septic field, it's underneath this whole grass area. That's all he said to me.
I mean, we're talking a couple feet. We're not talking about going to the septic field at all. I mean, I don't, I don't think we can be going that far in. I just don't want the scare tactic for everybody up here. We're going like two feet in.
Randy, I understand.
Go ahead.
You're the chairman.
No, please, go ahead.
So, when you talk about cul-de-sac, it has to be a specific, whatever, size, so I don't know what the feet is, and if, I don't even know if that's a standard street, right? So that could become another issue. I don't know. Is this study going to tell us all that stuff? That's all I want to know.
Absolutely, and these unknowns that we're bringing up is precisely the reason why staff thought it was logical to go with a feasibility study to, before we jump into a full design.
For sake of moving on, there will be alternatives, right?
Correct, I'm sure they'll, they'll provide several alternatives.
Okay, Alderman Jacob?
No, I'm fine.
Ames, Alderwoman Ames?
So, just, I wasn't here, obviously, for previous discussions, so how long ago was this brought up? Like, when, when did this become an issue that somebody wanted to close this off?
So this was included as an unfunded item on the CIP, and it was decided during that meeting, it was voted on unanimously by the council to move it into the funded list to, for discussion at a future meeting.
Right, I know this on this last CIP, but you said, Alderman Messina said he's gotten signatures, and I was thinking, just even anything that I've even looked at, just say somebody wanted sidewalks, it's unfunded, you've got to get signatures from a majority of the people. And Alderman Woods said something too, that part of this is unincorporated Bensonville, so that I'm thinking, well, if part of it's Bensonville, and we're Wood Dale, why would we be paying for this whole thing if a lot of the residents there are from Bensonville? And did a majority of the people sign, you know, it just...
It's an odd street that is actually a street that we are trying to force annex. We've been trying to force annex, the city has, for a while. It got brought up two years ago, so there's been ten houses sold in the last year, eight of which have kids, or people walking, there's no sidewalks. So there are people walking. Full disclosure, I live there, full disclosure, I, as the chief knows, will be the most inconvenience, because I can literally spit onto eighty-three and go where I need to go, but everybody on my block's okay with it. Everybody's walking. We've had one mailbox, yeah, multiple mailboxes knocked down, we've had cars cut through. That's probably the biggest thing, I think Alderman Catal, somebody that drives mentioned it to me. Every time there's backup traffic going south on eighty-three, they instantly cut through Second, take it around, to go to Oak Meadows and cut through. It's a huge, huge, huge chat, safety issue. I mean, that's the number one issue, why everything else doesn't matter. But please, did you have a follow-up?
No, I was just listening.
Yeah, sorry, Mayor, did you have a follow-up? Did you have a follow-up? Mayor?
No.
No, I just, I wanted to...
I just wanted to make sure we're going to get all the options, because honestly, two hundred and fifty thousand, could be higher, two hundred, whatever's in the budget. I know there's a lot of other things coming up in the budget, and I'd just like to know all my options, and if I can do something for fifty thousand versus two fifty.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I get, I'm going to stop talking, but I'm just going to tell you, I know that, and I hope Alderman Jacob will speak up at some point, but, everybody in there, I don't care if you want to put up a hundred bushes there, I couldn't care less. It needs to be blocked off. I will, next time, along with the residents in that subdivision, I'll bring all the footage that I've been asked to provide for all the number of ruses, the burglary that happened. Everybody cuts through and out that unfortunately my cameras have to catch, because they spill right onto eighty-three. When there was, it literally is a hundred feet to eighty-three. Where is this is being proposed? Go ahead.
Well, I mean, if you're talking about cutting through, I mean, everyone's got that. I'm right here, and everyone cuts through because they closed off commercials. So everybody cuts through my street, so you can't just keep cutting, you know, blocking off streets just because people cut through. I mean, I know that's eighty-three compared to Wood Dale Road, but, I mean, people are always going to cut through if they're inconvenienced. People are stopped by the train, they cut through my street.
Right, you have sidewalks, right?
Uh, not, no.
You guys, we have no sidewalks in the whole subdivision, and it's just a big...
There's some sidewalks, but not on my street.
Yeah, we don't have sidewalks, and the shooting, they, when there was that shooting with the officer in the warehouse, he ended up on eighty-three. Oak Brook, when that individual fled, he was on eighty-three. We've had multiple people, multiple mailboxes knocked down. I may go on for hours, I'm actually not going to do it, I'm going to let all the residents all the residents in there come in and speak to it, because I don't wanna do it a misjustice or lean it. I agree with you, in this case, I guess you have to go see it to believe it. In a perfect world, I hope they actually propose blocking it off at eighty-three and call it a day, that's, that would be even easier, especially as there's more development on eighty-three.
Are we still talking about this agreement with H.R. Green, or what?
Same agreement, it's literally just to do a feasibility study, so, are there any more questions?
I just have a follow-up, so you've said that you've talked about this over the years, have we gathered any of this information that's.
It got brought up.
Opposed in the feasibility study, like, we haven't gotten any of that, it's just kind of conversations, casual.
Yeah, it got brought up in, call it last April, they did some preliminary work and said, hey, you guys need to bring it to, whatever that meeting is, the strategic planning meeting, which is where it was brought up, those kind of ideas, got brought up. Then it got to CIP, and that's where we moved it from unfunded to, I guess you'd call it funded now. And then it becomes eventually a, we either do a feasibility stuff topic, or it becomes, comes to the council for review. They just need more information.
No, I just didn't know if any of it was already talked about since you said you've had conversations before, you know.
Yeah, there was all. There's all preliminary conversations of like, is this even worth it, what would it take? All that, like, I started pointing out all these areas that have those, pork chop, I call them pork chops. I'd say, take a look, talk to these people, as the mayor said, are there any other alternatives, cheaper alternatives?
Thank you.
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, so, I mean, this all happened several years ago, I mean, the subdivision there has multiple problems, and Alderman Messina and I have had multiple complaints about various problems, and then this was kind of brought up as a potential solution, and we put it to the residents at, you know, a couple of our homeowners meetings, which we meet with them every year. And, you know, ninety-nine and a half percent of them were, I don't think there's anybody that opposed it out of the subdivision. And then, you know, then we talked to Jeff and city council about this, so this was brought up probably three, four years ago.
No, it wasn't that long ago, three years ago.
Three years ago, probably.
Oh, well, here, we'll get, Alderman Curial, we'll get Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yes, will there be an option in the study for something without a turnaround? Because that seems to be the high cost of this project.
Director Lang?
I'm not sure what's required, if we're required to have a turnaround for emergency vehicles or garbage trucks, that's what, part of what the consultants will be looking at and advising on. So I'm sure there'll be several options, each with their own cost to benefit analysis, and that'll provide us with some, some tools for decision making.
Alderman Woods, oh, sorry, did you have another question? Anybody else, Alderman Woods?
Yeah, thanks, the, so the, the road there is a sixty-six foot right-of-way, correct?
Correct, I believe so.
So we know that. Cul-de-sac, turnaround for a fire truck, IFC, ninety-five feet plus easements, right, usually a hundred and thirty, hammerhead is usually about a hundred and twenty feet, we know that. A dead-end street, anything over a hundred and fifty feet, which that is, it's about three hundred feet, does need a turnaround. So, we can answer the questions, all I'm saying, not trying to stop the project, or I'm not supporting it, I'm just going, why do we have to go to this, and all these questions for the most part can be answered, including creating a budget. The engineers have, have to have at least a probable cost to do those two things, forget about the easement work, we, you know, that's a legal portion of it, but the general construction of it, and what we'd have to do to that road, and what it takes to close off Second Street.
Director Lang?
If there is a geometric layout with an estimate of probable cost associated with it, I have not seen it. I guess, I mean, I don't wanna tell you that, I'm too busy to do all these things, but we have phase one of the Public Works Facility Project kicking off on Monday, we have phase two is going to permit right now, we're at fifty percent documentation for that, so we're deep into the review for that. We have the three million dollar capital road program that we're trying to coordinate with the DCEO, we have a million dollars in sewer lining going on this year. I am still dealing with the easements from last year's storm sewer project, trying to get those closed out and taken care of. This is a tremendous time drain on staff, and there's, quite frankly, why we hire consultants is, there's things that, pitfalls that they're aware of, and opportunities they're aware of that staff are not. So that is why we like to have their assistance with, with items like this. And the other option is, we either move directly into the design, or we elect today not to go forward with this project. I am trying to present council with all the tools they need to make a decision.
So again, with, within that, because we're talking about coming back with five or six designs, and Alderman Messina pointed it out, that I think the project hangs on how much it costs, right? I think we can get to that answer faster, and for less than fifteen thousand, I don't need to waste thirty days, I'm not asking you to do any more work. I'm just saying there's another way to peel the apple.
City Manager Murris?
So as far as I know, unless somebody else has different numbers than me, which I highly doubt they're reliable, I was told it's around two hundred thousand plus or minus, so let's agree to do a design contract and do the project then tonight, we'll proceed to design phase.
If it's already in the budget, we can.
Sure, let's do it.
But I, I'm not, I'm not prepared, I would rather have, because I can speak up top, you know, I obviously am very passionate about it, but I can bring in, I would rather have these folks talk about the impact to them, so all I'm saying, I think it makes sense financially to have a feasibility study just to make sure that we're okay with that, with that number, and if it is too high, that's fine, I'm not scared to tell them, this doesn't financially work. Sorry, one day someone's gonna cut through and probably not kill your kid or kill us, that's fine, it is what it is, but I need numbers, I need data. I don't feel comfortable, personally feel comfortable taking a vote on something that's a huge, huge, in my opinion, very big life safety issue for eighty-five households, call it a hundred and fifty people, that to me is not, that's irresponsible. The feasibility, right, is to figure out, does it even make sense, fifteen grand to figure out, to save us two hundred grand?
I'm in, I'll make the motion to go for the feasibility study.
Second. Alderman Catalano?
No, I was just gonna say, you made the motion, did you put the money amount in the motion?
For the fifteen thousand dollars, is that what we're talking about here?
Yeah, it's fifteen thousand.
Not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars for the feasibility study. Secondary agree?
Secondary agrees, so we have a motion, a second, Director Lang, do you have any questions?
I just wanted to clarify, the, the price for the proposal is fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Correct.
Okay, and the amount not to exceed fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars, secondary agrees to that, we, all in favor? Or excuse me, we have to do a roll call, excuse me, roll call, I'm in.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Curialy?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Hallelujah, yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
And that passes. Next up is an approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and KSK Landscaping Handyman Corp. For grass cutting services for the grass cutting assistance program, and the amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any questions? Alderman Jacob?
So, last year, with the criteria, and I know we, we talked, I talked to Mr. Murris about this. With the criteria, I think there was, it's like sixty people, up to sixty people, and with the criteria, only like thirty-five hit it, was that correct?
Correct, I think thirty-one originally, and then a few dropped off, we wound up with twenty-nine on the list.
So I think we need to make that criteria, I mean, the budget's there for sixty people, I think we need to expand that criteria so that more people can participate, because I had a lot of residents upset that, you know, they couldn't participate in this.
Alderman Jacob, what criteria though, I mean, a lot of it was income?
I'm upset that I can't participate.
Yeah, it was income, and they need to raise, it was, I believe, well, Director Lang might have the answer, he may.
We, we did raise the income requirement this year to sixty-five thousand, which is in line with Bensonville's program. Last year it was in the forties, I'm not sure the exact number, but we did raise that to open it up to more people, and we also extended the program for a few more weeks to account for more leaf collection in November.
Okay, well, then it's taken care of, because I, that's why I said Bensonville I know raised it, because not everybody was taking advantage of it.
It's in the memo.
Sorry, Mayor, go ahead, it's in the memo.
It's in the memo, I was gonna say, so we changed the criteria a little bit, but Alderman Woods and myself still can't apply.
I don't know.
It's not open to elected officials anyway, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Does this, and, does this actually include vets as well?
I don't believe there is a veteran discount, it's strictly seniors and disabled at this point.
Something we would ever be open to considering? Handicap veteran?
If they, if they qualify with the income, though.
Right, 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 provided they, they qualify with the income, is that something the council would be open to consider?
You're saying not the age, the income?
Yeah, kinda like some of the other programs where it's not just, not just age, but it's also if you're handicapped, or if you're a vet, more like the city sticker one, I guess is a good example.
Disabled veterans certainly wouldn't apply under the disabled program, but the disabled program has the same income requirement as the senior eligibility as well.
Okay, I'll take care of that one, okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Next up, an approval and agreement between the City of Wooddale and H.R. Green for professional services for Tall Oaks Detention Basin retrofit. Director Lang, did you have a few words on that?
Absolutely, last week, City Manager Murris shared the good news that we received a DuPage County Water Quality Improvement Grant for this project, an amount up to a hundred thousand, a hundred and three thousand dollars. He also mentioned that we would be pursuing other funding opportunities, one of those is the American Recovery Plan Act funding, which is being made available through DuPage County Stormwater, up to eight million dollars for shovel-ready projects. The deadline for that is April twenty-first, so in order to get this project shovel-ready by then, we would have to proceed with the engineering design at this point.
Based on the, I guess I can answer my own, so, based on the American Recovery Act, is there some criteria when the funds need to be used, is it like a hundred and eighty days?
I, I'm not familiar with that requirement, but the project would be completed this year if we were to receive these funds.
Okay, Alderman Woods?
Which pond is this? Where is this pond at?
This is the detention basin located at the curve of Potter Street, Acatalpa Avenue. It's right next to the Tall Oaks Homeowners Association subdivision.
Behind, on Irving Park, what's that behind?
I believe it's right behind the Radcliffe.
Yeah.
Train parking lot, at the end.
Correct.
And so that, yeah, so to get the hundred and three, we have to spend four twelve, is that math correct?
Yes, so the, the DuPage County Water Quality Improvement Grant is twenty-five percent of eligible costs, which I believe were the, was the four twelve, and twenty-five percent of that is the hundred and three thousand. So we would be responsible for the remainder. If we were to receive this ARPA funding as well, it would cover, I think it's half of that cost, so we would wind up covering a quarter of the overall project.
And if I can follow up, so, so part of this, for the improvement, we're gonna, just on my brief reading of it, we'll break up that big pond and have smaller ponds and different levels, right, to create better filtering, I forgot the technical name for them.
Right, they would create riprap four bays and introduce some native species and prairie grasses to the area.
And then who's, who's gonna, my big question, where I was going with it, who's gonna maintain that?
Once it's completed, we would add it to our environmental management firms' list of responsibilities, currently they're doing Squaw Creek, the detention basins at Elizabeth Court, and the compensatory storage basin at the North Waste Water Treatment Plant.
I'm particularly, and they come out a couple times a year and look at it and check it, but who's gonna, the garbage, the regular maintenance, this stuff, because as you do those tall grasses and create these rain gardens and stuff, they tend to collect, as I'm told, tend to collect more garbage and debris, and there doesn't seem to be anybody around to take care of those on a regular basis, that's my question.
Absolutely, and.
Sorry, Director Lang?
Public Works can make a more assertive effort to maintain those, typically, you're right, the consultants come out, you know, once, once a month, or once every couple of months, and they spot treat herbicide, they'll remove debris while we're there, and we can kind of do some intermittent maintenance in between then.
If, one last follow-up, my promise, I'll stop. So, to your point, because you already pointed out to me how busy you are just a little while ago, and I'm assuming your staff is just as busy, and this is a fairly substantial pond, along with the other ones that are in town, Elizabeth, go on and on. Is that not gonna really necessitate getting a service or adding this to one of the landscape groups or something?
So this, this area wouldn't be routinely mowed, it might get prescribed burned once every couple of years, for the first three years, I think they recommend a yearly, or, you know, bi-yearly mowing. Right now, we mow it weekly when we can, when it's not completely saturated, at least the areas that we can get to. So, the most we can really do for it after it's completed is having these environmental managements out, not environmental management firms out, to control the invasive species and make sure that the native plants can flourish, and then we follow their recommendations for whether we should mow it, or, you know, perform a prescribed burning, which they do for us. But as far as the garbage, that's something that I think that Public Works would be more than able.
No, no, you're over the limit.
I don't know who's had more coffee, Alderman Woods or me today, so.
I don't drink coffee, just went sneaking in, okay, so what's gonna make this, my, my concern is, right, that, that the other pond, just right down the road, we spend money on, that I think everybody will agree, looks like, you pick the word, I'm not gonna say it.
I'll say it.
What's gonna stop this from turning into that, because there's other things at work, that, that pond does get overrun, it really does flood, I mean, it washes away, and all those things are gonna affect the, the look and performance of that.
What is your success plan, Director Lang?
I think part of the issues with the Elizabeth Court Basin specifically resulted from contractor error from the beginning, which now we had to play catch-up to correct. We hope to not have these problems with, we've now written in the specs that the contractor has an environmental manager on staff during construction to make sure that these things are put into place correctly, so we don't start out behind the eight ball on those.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor?
I hear native grasses, I get nervous, weeds. I know we spent money to fix the one, I think that's the one Alderman Woods was alluding to, not, not the one on Elizabeth Drive, but on Potter.
Potter and Pine, it's like, right by Potter and Pine.
So, I drive past that one every day, and yesterday, I think it was yesterday, it really looked like tar pits, the water was over the outlet. I can tell you that thing wasn't draining. Wait, wait, I'm not done. That's garbage. And if we're gonna turn this pond into that, don't even bring me that project forward. That's garbage. So hopefully we have different solutions, and I think ten years ago, or twelve years ago, when they were talking about this, it was two hundred and fifty thousand. So, okay, I, I don't want this pond looking like the other one, because I could tell you, I live a block away from that one. I'll have everybody on that block knocking on my door, the townhomes, the homes, look at this mud pit, if it looks like that one on Potter.
So, I'm sure glad I took my early flight in today to defend all these points, but, to be fair, the Potter Pond was before my time on the council, and I know there was a lot of, I don't know what happened with the construction of those townhomes, but somehow the drainage was allowed to go into that pond, so I don't know who we wanna blame, the builder, we wanna blame the council at that time, I am not here to blame anybody, I do know it's caused issues that we've now had to pay to fix, as you've like to say, the sins of the past, so we've paid for the sins of prior councils, or a builder that was allowed to do whatever, I don't know, I'm not gonna accuse. Director Lang?
Yeah, I apologize, I thought you were referring to Elizabeth Court Basins, but that Potter Street Rain Garden actually has the same issue that the Tall Oaks Detention Basin faces, which is a lack of positive drainage on the Metro right-of-way, which is included in this coordination with Metro to, to improve that, because whatever we do with these ponds, unless they can properly drain out, they're going to stay saturated, the native species aren't going to survive, and there are going to be mud pits, as you described them, so. These, the Tall Oaks Detention Pond is actually the headwaters to Silver Creek, so it flows through the Metro right-of-way, and eventually it becomes Silver Creek to the east of us. So this is part of an improved watershed plan, which is a big reason why we got the, the water quality improvement funding to begin with. So I, I think we're gonna be able to work with, put some pressure on Metro to do some better maintenance on their side of that right-of-way to help improve both the Potter Street Rain Garden and the Tall Oaks Detention Basin.
I guess to add to that, right, so Metro has tried, I know the mayor's been really good about pushing them, involved in trying to push them, I guess, to do more maintenance, they've tried to do some of that maintenance, right? We do have a plan to get them engaged, if this were to go forward, like, for. Um, we do have a plan to get them engaged, if this were to go forward, like for preventative maintenance?
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, they're largely reactive right now, and we would need to do some, some higher measures, uh, rather than just mowing when we start to complain or residents start to complain. So the first step is to get them to the table and discuss, uh, what the issue is and what needs to be done, and, and try to find a path forward from there. They've been pretty responsive when we have reached out. It takes a little time, as most of these agencies do, uh, but it, it does need, uh, some, some increased attention.
All right, Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, so as I think Alderman Woods and the mayor brought up, uh, let's just make sure that that pond does not look like that other pond, because I pushed for that pond to get fixed, and they knew about the water coming from the townhouses. The engineers and everybody said, oh, that's not gonna make a difference. This is gonna look so beautiful, and it did for the first six months, and, uh, now it looks worse than it did before they did the project, so. Let's make sure we take the engineer and everybody over for a little visit to that pond and let them know we do not want it to look like that.
Great. So, do you, are we ready for a, a roll call?
I would just like to remind everybody that that's not the only pond we've done in kind of the rain garden type style. We did do the one on Elizabeth Court, obviously. Uh, the engineering team that designed the Elizabeth Court Pond, um, is the same one that's designing this one. The Elizabeth Court one actually has won awards for its successes. Um, so the firm, uh, that designed the Potter Street one is not designing this one, so it's not like we haven't had some successes in these type of ponds with the right firm doing the right work. And we're never gonna get water quality grants. I know the mayor's not gonna wanna hear this, but you can't get water quality grants for mowing grass. Has to be these weed-looking things.
I understand. I sit on the committee. I understand.
Based on that, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, move into an agreement with the City of Wooddale and HR Green for professional services at Tall Oaks Detention Basin.
Second.
Roll call, this.
One more question.
Go ahead. Alderman Currielli?
Is it possible to just fix the drainage and not do all this native grass stuff?
Director?
Uh, there's a large amount of sedimentation built up in the bottom of the pond that would need to, we wouldn't be eligible for the water quality grant if all we did was improve the drainage. We have to add some type of best management practices, which would be these native plants, you know, putting in, rebarium streams and things like that. Um, it's an option. It might improve it slightly, but I think for the long-term health of this basin and just the, you know, the overall improvement of the area, these are the, the best practices that we follow.
Follow up?
Would it reduce the cost significantly, though?
Possibly. I mean, we maintain the outfalls now. We flush the, the outfalls, and we, uh, have Metro come out and mow on their side, but, uh, there's a lot of added benefits to these rain gardens that you don't see from just improving the outfalls.
Metro's done some projects. They tried, failed, but tried doing some work there. I, you could speak better to the work, but we're still back where we're at. Can you speak to that work that they've tried beyond the basic inlets?
The only work that I've ever seen them do out there is coming out and cutting back some of the brush and, you know, doing occasional mowing. Um, aside from that, I, they, there's some added, perhaps, infrastructure or some grading back there that's gonna be needed to improve the, the capacity.
All right. We're short on time here. Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
We got plenty of time.
Yeah. Uh, actually, I, I was asked the mayor a question since he's lived there all his life. Before I got on council and before you were mayor, what, weren't we able to mow that whole pond that there was no water in there? At one point in time?
Right, but like Mr. Lang said, so there's been blockages and Metro and everything. It just doesn't flow the same, and that pond had problems to begin with on the, on the inlet of that, which, I'm not an engineer, but when the pipe's not emptying out one-hundred percent after it's done raining and the pond is empty, there's a problem. And I don't know what the issues are. I'm not an engineer, but again, I know that Potter Street Pond, I showed pictures of, of a rain garden, and I guarantee you, the pictures I was showing, if we go back and look at the tape, the one on Potter Street, doesn't look anything like that, what I was looking at, and everybody, the engineers were here telling me all this great stuff. There's an issue over there. You can't cut it as much as you can now as you used to be, because it's, seems to be more flooded or damp or wet, whatever you wanna call it, right? There's issues going on over there, but like I said earlier, right, we've got a couple of projects here in front of us, you know. This one's not even in the budget, so I'd like to know all the numbers before we move forward. The project a few years ago was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Now it's over four-hundred thousand, could be more, until we do this. And I'm not a big fan of doing studies and then holding off, but if we're gonna make some decisions, we, we've got water towers coming forward, studies, we've got a lot of things coming forward. We're gonna have some decisions to make.
Will, will we, will we be able to know net what we would qualify for with these grants? I think that's like, is that the compelling reason to act now, is these, at, these grants that we can get our hands on?
Well, regardless, we're gonna probably proceed forward with the project, correct? So we already have the one grant, and the reason we wanna fast-track the engineering is to be able to qualify for a second grant, so it'd be stupid not to do it, because it's, we're gonna do it anyway.
Right, right, right. And I assume throughout the number of ten years, it hasn't been ten years since this got brought up. It's been maybe four or five. Do you guys have those numbers? Go ahead, Mayor.
Over ten years ago, this was brought up. It's more like maybe twelve. We did three studies. I remember these residents were all in here yelling. We did three studies. Naive as I was, brand, you know, fairly new Alderman, we did the studies, and then the council chose, yeah, we're not doing anything. And what do we do the studies for? Well, we just want the people to feel like we're doing something. That was the response I got. Honestly, I don't like to do that nonsense. Okay, but I'm looking. We got two studies here. Money. Water towers, money. Last I saw the budget, and I know Mr. Wilson's gonna come forward in a couple of weeks. That'll be interesting discussion. We need to know where we're, how we're going, and if you got the opportunity to get the fifty-fifty grant, the hundred thousand, if you're gonna do it, this is the perfect time, if you can get those grants, especially with all these projects coming forward. I like to know what I'm doing before I do something.
Well, they waited this long. I'm not, I'm not trying to push them off. I agree. Let's try to make sure it's financially makes the most sense. I know they're thrilled at the prospect of it, but obviously, if this is the best chance of us making this as cheap as possible, but reasonable, makes sense. Go ahead.
We did budget within the CIP, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for construction for stormwater improvements in Ward One this year. Um, on top of that, some added design funds are available. Um, so there is money in the budget. Uh, any bit of financial help that we can get, obviously, puts us in a better position, which is why we're, um, ardent pursuing these funding opportunities.
There's already two-hundred-and-fifty K in the budget for this, for this project or stormwater projects period?
For stormwater improvements in Ward One.
Because this is our, right, Ward One's, whatever, time for stormwater. Okay.
Correct, yeah. Originally, Tall Oaks Detention Basin was gonna be included in the RFP for the Ward One drainage study. Uh, however, given the, the opportunity to pursue the, the water quality grant, we decided to pull it out, uh, as the RFP timing wouldn't line up with pursuing that funding opportunity.
I have a follow-up.
Go ahead, Mayor.
We also have the study that we put out there that the RFP went out, right, so they're gonna come back with something. That could be an in Ward One, mostly Ward One, might be some Ward, a little bit of Ward Two, depending, because we're connecting three spots and whatnot, right? Correct? That study?
Correct.
So, we might move forward that project, so we're gonna move forward everything. We need to do the study, so we, we can figure out what we're gonna do. It's, it's simple.
Well, I don't think it is a disagreement. We need to do the study. It's happened before. They've waited, what, twelve years? Not even four? Great. We need to figure out feasibility. We have a compelling, compelling event, which is why we have to do this. Is there a motion? I've lost track. I, I'll gladly make the motion.
Oh, no, there is. I'm sorry.
Yeah, there is.
And there was a second, right? Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm taking one more. Okay.
Alderman Ames? I just wanna clarify. So is the dollar amount for this, the twenty thousand that was budgeted? Because it's not listed here for what exactly we're approving for HR Green for feasibility study, for how much?
So this is, this is not actually a feasibility study. This is a, uh, the.
Professional service design.
Design, engineering for, uh, the improvements themselves, so we would be construction-ready, ready to bid, uh, by April twenty-first, um, is the intention here. And, uh, the reason I didn't include the, the, um, agreement in the folder, just we don't have it yet from HR Green because of the timeline. We've put this together rather quickly to pursue this funding opportunity. You'll have it for the council meeting. They've ballparked it at around fifty thousand dollars for the engineering services to get this shovel-ready.
Okay, 'cause I'm just looking at this analysis. It says twenty thousand was budgeted for the CIP for fiscal year twenty-three for design and construction engineering services for this project. So it's more like fifty thousand?
Correct.
We budgeted only twenty, for your sense?
Correct.
Okay. A grain. There's, the grant doesn't apply to this, right? This is, we have to put up the money.
Correct. The grant is towards construction costs.
Right. The reason we're, again, we're moving it forward now, we know we were gonna do it. It's budgeted for its, this compelling event of getting access to that additional second grant.
Correct.
Okay. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, just, I'm gonna say it one more time. I'm, I'm okay with the project, right, but we're running to spend a half a million dollars on this, and it's all hinged or dependent on CalMed's right-of-way allowing the water to flow through. And there's nothing in the history, or at least the last fifteen years that I know of, that proves that anything's gonna get better. So my major concern in spending five-hundred thousand dollars to make this thing look good and work and perform better, and then it gets screwed up by the CalMed right-of-way, right? And a year from today.
The Metro, I mean.
Metro.
Yeah.
Sorry, thank you. The, the Metro right-of-way, you know, and a year or two years from now, we're going, you know, this thing ain't working, or it's not flowing. We just have another, I just, you don't have to answer. I'm just putting it out there. That's the problem with this whole project, for me.
I agree with you, and if I could, Chairman, I will just say that, as I mentioned, this is part of the Silver Creek watershed for which there is a work group, and perhaps there's power in numbers where if we put, uh, you know, enough improvement on our end that we can put enough pressure on Metro to.
Not to jump, can we add a pipe from ours to theirs? Can we bring them in to do something that isn't being done now, as opposed to just relying on somebody hopefully coming along the right-of-way and cutting and cleaning it up occasionally and eliminating all the things that get thrown there?
Right. I, I have no doubt that there are improvements that we can make on Metro's right-of-way that would help increase the conveyance. Um, you know, whether we can actually get them to the table to perform those improvements is, you know, another guess, but, um, all we can do, I guess, is do what we can do and work with this work group to try to put pressure on Metro to, um, you know, help us out.
All right. Anybody else? So, being that we don't have an amount, do we, do we, do we need a roll call, or can we do a year and a? Even without any monies being, okay?
There's gonna be money involved, actually, for sure.
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
And, that passes. There you go. Feel like I need a cigarette after all these, Jesus.
More than a cigarette.
So, next up, for items to be considered at future meetings, fiscal year twenty-three sewer rehab, March twenty-fourth. Beneficial reuse program, March twenty-fourth. RJN fiscal year twenty-three agreement, April fourteenth. Public Works facility bid release, two, May twelfth. Fiscal year twenty-three capital row program, May twelfth. City signage update, June ninth. Mr., Director Lang is definitely not busy.
Um. I'll make that motion for adjournment.
All right, is anybody, anything, anybody wanna add any other items? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Please. In a second.
And the, uh, yeah.
In a second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
We're, we're, we're adjourned. Jesus, I need to sleep.
I, I will call the order for the Finance Administration Committee, that the, that take a, take note that the same council members are present. Uh, I need a motion, uh, to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
For February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two?
Second.
Any corrections to the minutes? If they are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is report and recommendation, copier replacement. Um, in the amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand, uh, five hundred and one dollars and eighty cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call?
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is items to consider at future meetings. Water rates, April twenty-eighth. PC replacement program coming up in spring, and IT control room coming up this summer. Any other, um, any other items to consider for future meetings? If they are none, um, Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Well, I don't have one, uh, another one to consider, but I'd like to consider taking off the first one altogether.
I'd second that motion.
Sorry, the mayor says we can't.
You didn't get the memo yet, but City of Chicago is raising us. Just came through, so we're gonna have to discuss that no matter what. Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye, aye, aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.